Bartlett Board Meeting for November 17, 2015. I call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Ehrens?
Here.
Cammerer?
Here.
Carbonero?
Here.
Daeney?
Yes, here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. We requested that Pastor Sue Allen provide our invocation this evening. Pastor?
Why don't you just sit down for a second because I'm going to talk at you for a minute before we actually pray. Last week on Wednesday in the storms that ripped through everywhere here and especially through Bartlett, the light pole that cast light in our parking lot in the church came down, so we were in darkness. But then just two days later, with the events that happened in Paris, the world was cast in darkness, not just our little parking lot. Anne Lamott, who is a writer and speaker, posted the next day and said, "Where do we find grace and light?" If you mean right now, she said, "Nowhere." It's like after a child dies, grace always does last, and the light always overcomes the darkness, always, historically, but not necessarily the same day or tomorrow or after Wendell Berry said about Advent, the season that is coming up for us, "It gets darker and darker and darker, and then Jesus is born." But it's only the middle of November, so it's still pretty dark. So what do we do and where do we find the answers? Anne said, "Talking and sticking together was the answer, and honest to God was," she said, "and showing up." So after an appropriate time of being stunned and in despair, we show up. Maybe we ask God for help and we do the next right thing. We buy or cook a bunch of food for the local homeless. We return phone calls and library books and smiles. We make eye contact with others and we go to the market and flirt with old or scary-looking individuals who seem lonely, and that's a blessed sacrament. We take action and insight will follow. We're basically powerless but not helpless. In the face of all the things that face us, in the world, in Paris, here in the village of Bartlett, we give thanks that maybe we're not in Paris or maybe we're not the village of Fox Lake dealing with what they are dealing with now. But we have our own problems and our own darkness to deal with always. So I think the advice of doing the next right thing is worthwhile. Talk to a neighbor. Smile at a stranger. Give a little or give a lot. Be the light in someone else's darkness, the harmony to someone else's song, the grace in a world filled with terror and violence, the love in a culture of hate. Do the next right thing. God, in this season of darkness and these times of darkness that invade us, help us to see the light. Give us strength to do the next right thing, and when we fail, to pick ourselves up and go on and do the next right thing again. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Sue. We have a scout in the audience looking for a badge, Ethan Bax. Can you let us know what troop you're in and what badge you're looking for, and then you can lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I am Ethan Bax. I am 12, and I'm in Troop 26, and I am working towards the Communications Merit Badge and the Citizenship in the Community Merit Badge.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being here, Ethan. Next, we have our consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk on the consent agenda will be considered enacted in one motion. There'll be no other discussion. Does anybody at this point like to add anything to the consent agenda? Mr. Daeney, how about?
What about the computer replacement? You know what? I'd like to add everything under my committee. I don't think that's going to happen this evening.
Computer replacement?
Computer replacement purchase.
Do you have a problem with that? All right, I agree.
I only have a comment to add to that, but it's not on the basis of approving it or not.
Okay.
I'll bring that up later.
Okay. Anybody else?
Sure.
Sure. Let's go ahead and put the stop sign, the municipal code amendment, new stop sign locations, F1, on the consent agenda as well.
I might have some questions on that.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Necessity questions. I was thinking the Creek Lift Station came in $180,000 under budget. I don't know why we would need to discuss that.
I just wanted to, I thought we could just, if nothing else.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to amend the consent agenda to include the minutes, board and committee minutes from November 3, 2015, the bills list from November 17, 2015, adding C3 under Finance and Golf Committee for the computer replacement purchase.
So moved.
Second, yes.
Moved by trustee Cammerer, seconded by trustee Daeney. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Daeney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Ehrens?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by trustee Hopkins, seconded by trustee Daeney. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Ehrens?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Daeney?
Yes.
That motion carries. Before we get too far here, trustee Ehrens, can you hear us okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, the next item we have on our agenda this evening is the Treasurers Report delivered by Jeff.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just one report this evening, and that's the Sales Tax Report. Sales tax for the year-to-date, $771,717, and it represents a 2.03% increase over this same time period last year. And as the board is aware, the MFT and our gaming revenue is still being delayed, but there's some hope that possibly in January those funds will be released.
Do we have any questions for Jeff? Thank you, Mr. Martinox. The next item we have is the President's Report. Ask staff to draft a resolution regarding that, such MFT and a few other items of revenue that seem to be held hostage down south. I'll read the resolution here. Resolution 2015-92, "Resilience Urge Illinois State Leaders to Release Non-General Funds Fund Revenues Payable to Local Governments. Whereas the state of Illinois has been operating without a fiscal year 2016 state budget since July 1, 2015, and whereas the absence of a budget has resulted in the state withholding over $150 million in revenue owed to municipal governments for lack of appropriation authority, and whereas the critical local services such as road construction, maintenance, and repair will remain underfunded until state leaders take action to release local motor fuel tax funds to municipalities, and whereas in the village of Bartlett, the state is withholding $336,666 in motor fuel tax funds and $30,000 in video gaming revenues, and whereas municipal budgets and basic services will be negatively impacted without the release of local use tax, video gaming fees, and casino fees. Now therefore, be it resolved by the President and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Bartlett that we call upon the Governor and the General Assembly to take action to immediately release all non-general fund revenues owed to local governments. These funds include revenues from the motor fuel tax, the Wireless Service Emergency Fund, use tax, local government distributor fund, and gaming. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Governor, Comptroller, Senate President, Senate Minority Leader, House Speaker, House Minority Leader, local legislators, and the Illinois Municipal League. Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution."
Second.
Moved by trustee Daeney, seconded by trustee Carbonero. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Ranky?
Yes.
Ehrens?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Daeney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
That motion carries. It is resolved. Any questions at this point? I didn't get your point there, trustee Carbonero, that you had. Do you have a comment on some?
Oh, do we have our IT guy here tonight?
Yes.
Do we have our IT person here tonight?
Yes.
Yes, there he is. Okay. We're, the computer replacement purchase was on the consent agenda. I think I discussed this with you once before, probably maybe two or three years before we have this discussion again, but can we put some numbers together to look at the conversion of our current version of our server and looking at Y's terminals?
You're talking about virtualization at the desktop. We will look at that. It's still kind of at that point where it's kind of a break even. You're not really gaining much as far as cost goes to virtualize the desktops yet just because, again, you've got to have enough server and to handle all the work of the desktops. But it's getting closer. I've talked to a few of my colleagues, and some of them are dipping their toes in it, so certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Moving along to the town hall portion of the meeting. This is a portion of the meeting where you're invited to come up to the podium if you'd like to address the board. Please state your name for the record and keep your comments to three minutes.
Art Brashanek, 925 Auburn Lane. Just following up with the last meeting, my comments about trying to get a dialogue going with U46 between the village, the residents, and the board, I hope you're going to go forward with that. Heard a lot of positives from people outside of here saying that they would really like to see something like that. And speaking of U46, I was at their meeting last night, and a couple of things, maybe you've heard from some residents or not, about some of the current things going on. They're looking at moving 107 students out of Nature Ridge that currently live in the Harren's Landing subdivision, and they want to move them down to Liberty. And it's got mixed results by a lot of the residents, and I'm not sure if the full reasoning why that's happening, because it is so close to that subdivision, why they're doing that. So that might be something to follow up right away with. The other thing, the Jacaranda subdivision over by Hawk Hollow, they're looking at selling that parcel, and apparently some of the residents that use that school and Bartlett High School say that that's a piece of property that's used widely by the residents of both of those schools. The football team, I think, uses it for some practices, and the school uses it for some outdoor activities, too. So I think they're using this to fund their new kindergarten program, so I hope they're not just pushing stuff through and not taking into account what the residents want. The other thing, the full-time kindergarten program that they're proposing, I saw some sheets last night, and maybe they've shared it with you. The new kindergarten program has 55 full-time employees, and there's an $81,000 cost associated with each employee, and people are saying, "That sounds like a pretty expensive kindergarten program." And you guys can cut the budget all you want here, but U46 is killing everybody on the tax bills, so we need them to understand that they've got to be doing their job with all of this stuff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Art. Anybody else like to address the board at this time? Okay, none, we'll move on to our standing committee reports this evening. First standing committee report is under Planning and Zoning Committee Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing on planning and zoning this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next standing committee report is the Building Committee Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. There's nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Next item we have in our standing committee reports is under Finance and Golf Committee, Chairman Daeney.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have nothing, oh, I'm sorry, there are a couple of items. The first item is a utility tax discussion, and with that, I'd really like to turn that over to Jeff, if I may.
Thank you, trustee Daeney. At our October 20th committee meeting, staff was asked to look at a couple of different options to shift the burden between the gas and electric utility tax. We were asked to contact businesses in the business park, rental communities throughout the village, and also analyze what the residential impact might be on the two options that were proposed. Option one, currently, the village generates $1.4 million. An option was proposed to set the gas and electric rates evenly, 50/50, to generate $1.4 million. Option two, this option would eliminate the gas tax and max out the electric kilowatt-hours to generate approximately $1.3 million, the maximum we could generate under the electric utility tax. Attached to my memo, you have a spreadsheet that looks at two options. We did update this based upon the request of another board member during the week. Jim could just scroll down. Okay, thanks. You can see that this option, which is to split the gas tax and the electric tax to generate $1.4 million evenly between both of those utilities. We looked at three businesses. We'll call them Business A, B, and C. Looked at three rental units, A, B, and C, and the residential impact. We did find, if you see to the column on the right that's boxed, under this scenario, all of the surveyed businesses, rental units, and residential would go up accordingly. Under option two, again, which is to eliminate the gas tax and max the electric tax, all businesses, rental units, and residential that was surveyed on the right, you can see that their amounts would go up accordingly. And then we just included in option three, which is to cut the gas tax by $700,000 and keep the electric the same. Under this option, you can see that it's different. Every business rental unit residential would go down under this scenario, so that would be the effect of cutting $700,000 out of the utility tax. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the data that we put together, how we came about getting it, or whatnot.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. First and foremost, included in our agenda packet was two ordinances. Am I to assume that those two ordinances are superseded by the red line documents that we now, we were provided on the bench? Okay, so I'll put that aside so I don't get confused. So then for our consideration, we have an ordinance to lower the municipal natural gas use tax and a lower the municipal electricity use tax. Let's start with the gas because you mentioned. So in the proposed ordinance, you would reduce the tax rate, so the burden on consumers significantly in the aggregate amount of $700,000. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to save the taxpayer $700,000, businesses and residents. For that second ordinance...
The $700,000, as I understand, is the combination...
That's total. Both of these. Okay, so then the second ordinance is the electricity ordinance, and how much is that going to save the taxpayers?
It's cutting it in half again.
Right. Cutting it in half again.
Right. I think it's fair to say, under that, under the two ordinances, if approved, that would save each of the businesses, rental units, and residents annual amounts.
Which are reflected in that graph right there.
Well, option three is to keep the gas, the electric tax, the same.
Says it right there.
Yeah, so it says.
But that's what it says.
Let me preface how we came about this. Option three was a request by a board member to cut the gas tax by $700,000.
Right.
Keep the electric the same. The analysis that's in your packets doesn't include, does not include those cuts. I mean, they do. If you look at it as a whole, $700,000, everyone's utility taxes are going to decrease. But we didn't look at, you know, the electric going down by 150 and then the gas going down by another 550. Only this option, because that's what we were asked to put together. But I'm confident telling you that a $700,000 decrease will save each of these businesses, rental units, and residential surveyed money.
Because obviously, my biggest concern is, you know, I appreciate the chart. I want to make sure that the ordinances actually do reduce the utility taxes, and it looks like that to me, but I want to make sure I understand the dollar value for budgeting purposes.
Okay. We didn't put those together. We just included the ordinances based upon what we were requested.
Okay. All right, fair enough.
Well, I kind of have an issue with a few things. The data regarding the businesses is presented with precise numbers. For three businesses you guys chose, the data regarding residences is presented with an average of all residences divided by the number of residences. We have three random precise numbers versus an average. The data used for the businesses is exact numbers per year, whereas the data for the average of residents was rounded up by 163 kilowatt-hours per month for a total of 1,956 additional kilowatt-hours per year. Am I correct?
Yes, that's because the businesses and the rental units, we were able to contact those individuals and get their actual consumption, whereas a resident, we had to do a large, broad survey.
The businesses are precise, where the rental units and the residences are rounded to the nearest thousands. The rounding significantly changes the data presented, significantly. The data as shown indicates that by estimating the gas tax, it would increase the cost to the average resident $2.54, as you stated. By my calculations, just based on the spreadsheet, the numbers, if the numbers aren't rounded, the average resident will actually save money if you don't round to 1,000. Do you agree with that?
Looking at it from an average perspective, then yes, I do.
And by, just curiosity, why did you round up?
Because we received data from ComEd and NICOR, and we divided it accordingly, and to make it simplified, we took that average.
I know, but if you, you took the raw data from NICOR, 1,106 terms, didn't round it. You chose not to. You chose not to round up Business A, B, and C, but rental unit, Unit A, B, and C you rounded, and the residents, you clearly rounded, and it just, it's skewed. These numbers are...
I don't believe it's skewed.
Well, how about this?
I stand behind my data.
Take a short recess, and you go crunch the numbers for the residents, and you don't round. You don't round the residents. You keep it at, I think it was...
I think the amount you're talking about is de minimis.
What was that?
I think the amount you're talking about would be somewhat de minimis.
But I know, but we're trying to get a clear view of all the data presented.
You won't get a clear view for every resident in town.
What was that?
You won't get a clear view for every single resident in town.
I know, but...
Because everybody has different consumption.
I know, but the data that you presented says that in your scenario, 50/50, tax revenue cut, the average resident would see a $4.07 increase on their bills. And in your option two, eliminating the gas tax and maxing the electric tax, you said the average resident would increase $2.54, okay? I don't think those numbers are accurate. Well, the numbers are accurate, but if you actually take the annual kilowatt-hours used and you don't round, the average resident, just by this, without cutting $700,000, the average resident would actually save $6.89.
A year.
A year.
So we're talking about $4 difference a year.
You're right.
A year.
Year.
So we're nickels and dimes.
Yep, but it, what you did was skew the numbers here. When you kind of look at it, when you, when you look at it, when you look at it, though, when you look at it, you take the total, you have total increases, so you are allowed to say, in all these scenarios, it increases. But if you don't, if you don't round up, you can't save that.
In the scenario, in option three, the residential amount decreases when you decrease revenue by $700,000.
I know, but we don't have to, we don't have to reduce $700,000 out of the budget, and the residents would save money.
But the businesses wouldn't, and that's an issue.
You've got some certain businesses that would be obviously impacted pretty tremendously.
I just have a problem with the way this data was obtained and presented. I honestly do.
I'm sorry, Ehrens, Adam.
Yes.
Where are you getting your information? Are you a CPA?
No, actually, you can just look at Jeff's spreadsheet, and I actually was emailing with Jeff, and he stated, he took the kilowatt-hours used, and he divided it by the amount of residents that we have, and he determined, I think it was 10,044 kilowatt-hours per average resident, and he chose to raise the kilowatt-hour use up to 1,000.
Well, for the purpose of anti-nitpicking, I would suggest that we move on, and I would trust, I would trust his numbers and his methodology in determining these numbers. And I think what you're talking about is too small to waste our time with. I'm sorry.
Oh, excellent. We can definitely move on. I just wanted to bring it to light that I do not agree with the way that these numbers were put together. I honestly don't.
All right. Well, I think, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I think in terms of moving the discussion along, I think, you know, you've made your point. I move to approve ordinance 2015-...
95.
25?
95.
95. An ordinance amending Title 14, Chapter 1, Section 14-1-3 of the Bartlett Municipal Code to lower the municipal natural gas use tax.
Second.
Moved by trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee Cammerer. Is there any additional discussion?
Just one question for you, Jeff. Putting aside the spreadsheets, what is the current natural gas tax rate in the village of Bartlett?
Five cents.
Five cents per...
And we are proposing to cut it to 2.5 cents. Okay.
It equates to what? Thought the discussion was for $700,000.
That's just the half of it. The electric is the other 150. There's two ordinances here.
How the hell did electric get thrown in here?
There's two ordinances here.
I just would really like a little clarification, specifically what the motion is and what the second is.
We have a motion on the table right now to approve the ordinance amending Title 14, Chapter 2, Section 14-2, 3 of the Municipal Code...
Yeah.
For the natural gas decrease rate in five cents down to two and a half cents.
All right.
And then we've got another motion that's going to need to be presented for the electric tax.
All right, I'm with you now, so we're just looking at the gas.
Yes.
And again, what would that amount be?
Representing $550,000 in tax savings.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
So once again, the reduced gas tax by 700,000.
No.
We're not talking about... We're not talking about...
50% reduction on both taxes.
But the, what's, what's on the floor is simply this ordinance to reduce the natural gas tax, cutting it from five cents to and a half cents. Seven dollars, that equates to 550,000. If you pass the second ordinance, which cuts the electricity use tax in half again, that'll add 150.
150.
So the total between the two ordinances would be 700,000.
I do have to agree with Trustee Carbonaro.
It's not what we just...
I thought that the proposal was going to be that we were going to reduce the gas by 750, 700,000 alone, and not do anything with the electric. That was my understanding.
I, I drafted these.
I don't remember ever discussing reducing the electric, uh, utility tax. It was all, all the gas.
That was Trustee Hopkins's.
I didn't discuss reducing the...
Oh, you were, you were gas, okay.
Trustee Ranky, uh, asked me to prepare both these ordinances, and I clarified it to cut both in half. So that's what was drafted. We didn't know the direction. We could have had a different ordinance, um, just cutting gas.
Just cutting the gas.
And try and back into that amount. But I don't think that was the direction, or I, not as I understood it, to where it was beyond discussion, but actually put in ordinance form.
Any other discussion?
Kent...
Yes. I want, I just wanted to remind, excuse me, my, um, colleagues that, um, when we
look at anything that's going to cost our businesses more money, um, I would, uh, I just want you all to remember that most of the businesses in town, maybe not the biggest tax, uh, revenue sources, but most of the businesses in town are ma and pa shops. And these are the people that live in Bartlett, they've invested their money in Bartlett, and, uh, they're trying to be here to stay. And I think we need to take a lot of respect for that kind of commitment, and a lot of consideration for them. That's all.
Oh, my, my understanding is this would be universal. This would include residential, business, and, and, right.
Save everyone money.
Right, save everyone.
Save everyone tax money.
I think, I think one thing that, uh, you know, we have to keep in mind, though, also is that, you know, I don't know if any of us, and I know some of us have spoke about this, and I don't want to steal anybody's, you know, thoughts on this, but, uh, and, but we have to kind of keep in mind that we may not be able to sustain this, this cut. It depends a lot on what's going to happen in Springfield. So I mean, this is a step forward in the right direction, and hopefully we can maintain that. But there is a possibility that, uh, that we'll, we won't be able to maintain this in the next budget.
Well, yeah, and I think there's a recognition in both of the ordinances, and, and I think, you know, we, we all are educated about what's happening in Springfield and understand that if, if Springfield steals 50% of our LGDF or refuses to turn over the MFTs, if we, if the Village of Bartlett faces a substantial decrease in revenues, it's going to force some very difficult decisions on us.
Yes, it will.
And I think we all understand that.
Okay. Further clarification, we are basically voting on option three.
Correct, but it's in two stages. There are two different ord... No, not, not option three. Oh.
It's not option three. And that, that's what I think is maybe confusing the conversation, because it's, option three says reduce the gas tax by 700 and keep the electric tax. What we have before us is two ordinances, one for cutting the natural gas tax by $550,000, and one cutting the electric utility tax by, I think, $150,000.
Correct.
And the one on the floor is 2015 dash 95, the ga, the gas tax.
And how does what has just been proposed affect the businesses in town?
The businesses will see their gas tax cut in half, and the residents...
Everybody is going to see...
So in, in effect, it won't be the, the first scenario or the second scenario, it would be the third scenario that we're, that we're seeing, so that we're not raising any tax. I just want to be clear that we are not putting a burden, undue burden on businesses or the rental units in our town.
Yes, we'll be putting a burden on them by reducing their taxes.
You're going to be reducing every tax...
Yes, so we're going to be putting a burden on the businesses by reducing their taxes.
Well, glad we're reducing their taxes, that's good. That's what we want.
You're going to see a, a larger decrease in the gas, I think, than the electric, but I think it'd be safe to say, Jeff, that it's ver, it'd be fairly similar to your, um, version three there, and the total net savings.
I don't need to...
Yeah, very, very similar to that.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to clarify. That's what I want to hear.
For some residents.
Yeah.
So by reducing this, we will also be watching what happens in the future, because we do not have the crystal ball to see what the state of Illinois is going to do, but what they do in the future will affect the Village of Bartlett.
Well, as I said before, we're going to be reviewing this in another three months at budget time anyway, so... Is there any other discussion? There's a motion on the table to approve the ordinance to cut the gas tax in half. Any other discussion?
No.
Attorney, now, the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Arons?
No.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
And motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve, um, ordinance amending the electricity tax.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Cammerer, seconded by Trustee Ranky. Is there any discussion on the reduction in the electric tax?
Now, the amount on this should be about 150,000, is that correct?
Correct.
And again, that's universal, includes business, rental units, and residential?
Yep. Yeah, there's no separating, um, on, we tried looking into that as well.
And the red line version takes into consideration the email that you provided to us from Exelon?
Yes, um, I had drafted ordinances because of the timing of when the board packets went out and sent them off to both NICOR's attorneys and Exelon's attorneys. The NICOR came back first, made changes, so that's some of the red line, then I tried to make the ordinances match each other, and was hounding, um, Exelon's attorney to give me their comments. And in the draft, one of the, uh, tax items was carried out three decimal points, and they said their system only goes, you know, it was carried out four, uh, it only goes three. So they suggested a very minor, uh, change, and it's only on the heavy end, and it's actually a little, slightly larger cut, but it's nominal dollars difference. So yes, it includes, uh, Exelon's attorney's comments and the email I received today.
Any other discussion? Trustee Arons, anything?
No, I just, um, I'm, when does this exactly, uh, become effective?
May 1st.
Of 2016.
Correct.
Thank you.
There's no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Arons?
No.
And motion carries. And before we go off the subject, um, I think it's, it's, um, appropriate to thank Jeff for the hours and hours and hours. I was privy to some of the hours and hours and hours of work they put into this, so thank you for your work, Jeff, and your team.
Okay, the next item that we have to report on this evening is the, uh, 2015 estimated property tax levy. And Jeff, we're not going to let you off that easy.
Before you do anything, um, this was tabled at the last meeting.
Oh, that's right.
So we need a motion to remove it from the table.
Motion to remove it from table. So we have seconded.
Can't do that.
Second.
Why can't I?
I have...
Your committee. Second it.
Motion by Trustee Danny, seconded by Trustee Ranky, to, uh, remove the, um, tax levy, um, item off the table. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Arons?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
And motion carries. It's all yours, Ray.
All right, thank you. And, uh, Jeff, like I said before, we're not going to let you off that easily, at least I'm not. Please, would you take this from here?
I'd be happy to, Trustee Danny. Uh, the village board discussed the proposed tax levy at the October 20th committee meeting. The memo before the village board tonight is to establish an estimated 2015 property tax levy. Uh, the next step in the process, then, would be to conduct a public hearing on December 15th to approve the estimated levy. Um, then, that would go back for final, I'm sorry, December 1st would be the public hearing, December 15th would be to approve a final levy amount. Just to recap, the 2015 proposed levy, 9,265,478 dollars, includes levies for our general corporate fund, police pension fund, and debt service. A total decrease from the 2014 extension, 174,134 dollars, or 1.85% from last year.
You got to echo there, Jeff. Is that an applause? I think it was an applause.
I thought maybe you were retiring from the Yankees or something.
Essentially leaving the tax levy flat.
Correct. And how, and how many years have we left that flat?
It's been six, six years now.
Actually, we reduced it last year.
We reduced it.
Last year, we reduced 150,000, the year before that, 550,000.
So in lieu of what's going on down in Springfield, we are still electing to not raise the taxes?
At this point, staff has no proposal on doing that.
Thank you.
Motion to approve this?
So moved.
No, can I get a motion to approve this?
No.
Second?
I'll second it.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Cammerer, seconded by Trustee Carbonaro. Is there any discussion now? Anyone? Trustee Arons?
Oh, ComEd.
All right, the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Arons?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
And motion carries.
Mr. President, we have nothing else on the agenda this evening.
Thank you, Trustee Danny. Next item we have under our standing committee reports this evening is under license and ordinance, Chairman Arons?
Nothing on our agenda. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Arons. Next item we have on our agenda this evening is Police and Health Committee, Chairman Carbonaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. There is nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonaro. Next item under Standing Committee Reports is under Public Works Committee, Chairman Cammerer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first thing we have under the, uh, on the, on the agenda tonight is the, uh, new stop sign locations, and I'd like to, uh, defer to Dan to give us the, uh, breakdown of how we go about actually, uh, assessing how a stop sign is determined for a particular location. If you could do that, that'd be something I, I think people would be interesting, interested in hearing.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Cammerer. Um, well, we have two areas that we're looking at placing, uh, proposed stop signs. Um, one is out west, where we have new development coming in, the Blue Heron Industrial Park. Uh, and then we just talked about Bartlett Point West, which will be developing, and hopefully the commercial area to the west of that. And we, working with the police department, thought we should start to establish the, uh, stop signs that would be needed and need to be approved by the board, uh, to establish. Um, so we looked at those areas, and typically, you, what you're doing is you're looking at the main routes, and you want traffic to flow on those, and then the secondary routes coming up to them, you would stop control. Or yield, you can place yields as well, but it depends on the situation. Um, the other area that we're looking at, uh, Trustee Hopkins had, uh, raised a question to, to us, um, on Morse Avenue. Right now, Morse Avenue does not have, many of the intersections do not have any control at all, so it's just an open intersection. Um, vehicles need to yield, um, but there's a guessing game as far as who's going to do that yielding. Um, so that was a concern that was raised. Um, the police department had looked at this prior, and actually put a little report together to, to determine what would make sense as far as, uh, which direction, and does it warrant signing the intersections? And based on, uh, our, uh, working together, um, we determined that Morse is more of the main route, and that the north-south blocks going to it are more of the secondary. So we are proposing to have stop control on the, uh, north and southbound directions, um, and then allow Morse, except for the one intersection where we have full four-way stop, um, control. So that's kind of what we're proposing. We've worked with the police department to come up with that.
So just for clarification, it was always my understanding that there had to be a certain amount of traffic on roads. Do we have something that's listed that says we have to have, on this particular type of street, we have to have so much volume of traffic? And, uh, uh, you know, I know that there's been other streets that people have tried to get stop signs on, and they haven't met that criteria, and I can't imagine that the streets that I'm thinking about would have had less traffic than, say, some of these streets in downtown Bartlett. And so I thought, I, I'm not certain, is there, is there, for a set side street, there has to be, you know, 100 cars a day, 50 cars a day? I, I'm just, I don't know.
That's all factored in when we're, when we're looking at it. Um, you also look at, we've got a school to the south and a school to the north, um, so there's peaks during those times when the school starts and when the school gets out. So you're looking at that, and I think that was one of the main concerns that Trustee Hopkins had raised, is during those peak times, is when you got the concern with the kids, along with the traffic, um, and not having signage there raised the concern, and I believe he experienced, and I, I don't know that we've had accident history there. Chief can, can talk to that, but, so we, we evaluated and determined that...
So did you do a traffic meter, uh, the things that go, cars go across?
Traffic counts.
And you did a count, and here again, the, the number of cars that go down those streets that, that justify a stop sign?
I, I wouldn't justify it on traffic alone, no. It was a totality of circumstances, which I doubt allows you to take into consideration. Uh, the confusion expressed by the neighborhood itself, uh, the peak hours, uh, the concerns for student, uh, safety, and the fact that there is a, uh, Morse is the obvious, um, more heavily consistently traveled, uh, roadway. So if you were going to mark it, uh, that would be the logical way to do it, uh, according to the standards. However, you're right, it's not a, uh, the traffic counts aren't going to show you it's a sterns road, or, uh, you're not going to get a justification by sheer numbers of traffic. But I doubt does allow you to make clarifications if, if it's, uh, to bolster safety, and that's what this would fall under.
Well, that was just always my understanding, was that if you didn't meet a certain amount of traffic on, or volume on your road, then you couldn't have a stop sign.
Yeah, that's not, uh, it, that, again, depends on the totality of circumstances. That may be completely true in one circumstance and completely not true in another. It would depend on the whole environmental outlay of the, of the neighborhood and the situation at hand. I, it's hard to throw a blanket comment out like that, uh, because that's not true. Uh, there are some times when it is absolutely true, but in this situation, we felt there was enough environmentals and tangibles that we could justify.
So if we have streets that we know of that could potentially need stop signs, we just simply need to, uh, bring that up to you?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right.
My question, I guess the reason for not wanting to put it on consent is, uh, I've traveled that road quite a bit, I guess. Is it, is there, are there a lot of accidents?
No, there are not a lot of accidents.
Are there any?
Are some accidents. I just don't want to be an alarmist and say that's a high-traffic, uh, accident area. Now, that would be incorrect.
What does it cost us to put one of these stop signs in?
I don't have that number offhand, but, I mean, we would, we would do the install and make the signs, so the cost is minimal.
I don't know, it just seems like for the years that this neighborhood's been back
I don't have that number offhand, but, I mean, we would, we would do the install and make the sign, so the cost is minimal.
I don't know, it just seems like for the years that this neighborhood's been back there, nobody's ever had a problem with it. Or is it just, they've just, they've been complaining to the village?
There have been times where we have received complaints to say that it's suddenly spiked, no. And, and it hasn't changed significantly over the years either. It's a pretty stable neighborhood. So, I, I, I could see both sides of the fence on this one.
Yeah, the only concern I have, too, is that when you put stop signs on the side streets, it tends to speed up Morris. People are going to go faster down Morris now. You're going to find that.
That's actually been proven true.
Yeah.
The more stops you make, the more the person feels like they have to make up for the time lost by the complete stop.
So, they don't have to look anymore.
Yeah, that's right.
So, I think that's just as dangerous as stop signs, but that's fine. That's all I got.
So, any other questions by the board? So, then, as we.
Just have one comment that I'd like to make. Based on, we, we have an ordinance that we're going to vote on this evening on these stop signs, and I'm just wondering, based on the comments that were given here this evening, does anyone want to rethink this? Move forward?
I trust the chief's judgment on it. He thinks it's necessary? I think it's necessary.
I, I would like to be on record to say that this was brought to us by the board. We researched it, and while we can justify it, I can see both sides of the, the argument on this. So, it's a board decision. I, I, I'm not going to be an alarmist and say I have a whole bunch of accidents out there that need to be prevented, because I don't.
Yeah, I just, I just don't want to be sitting here a year from now and then saying, hey, people are flying down Morris, why do you have a stop sign here?
There's always.
Put a light in.
Sometimes there are unanticipated consequences to decisions you make.
Hey, that's fine.
So, I need to, I'm, bring the motion before?
Yes.
Okay, so I move the Village Board adopt ordinance 2015-93, an ordinance amending the Bartlett Remissible Code, Section 6-11-1204, one.
Second.
Any discussion?
Moved by Trustee Cammer, seconded by Trustee Ranky. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Erins?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daaney?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, sorry.
Are you stopped on the stop sign?
I'm just kind of befuddled by the, the stop sign, yes, exactly, but we'll move on. Sorry about that. All right, our next item on the agenda is the Country Creek Lift Station upgrade. And once again, I just wanted to make comment that it's the, the staff has to commend, commend it for having budgeted this at 520,000. We're coming in way under bid, which is great. And do we have any comments? Dan, do you like to comment on this at all?
Thank you. I'd just like to add, the reason we were able to save that is originally, we were thinking we would have to totally replace the metal can that's 43 feet deep. So, we were going to have to dig a 43-foot hole next to a creek, which drove up the cost. After our evaluation and looking at the can, it looks like it's in decent shape, we're actually going to put a structural coating on it that will buy us another 50-plus years, and we can reuse that structure, put the pumps down into that structure and reuse it, so it saved us a lot of money, which helps.
Any questions by the board?
Who came up with that idea for about the?
Who had to go down the hole?
We also, working with our consultant, we were able to push in that direction and.
Great work. Great work.
Great to be able to save your can for another 50 years.
Who drew the short straw and had to go down the hole and look at the can?
Not me.
Okay, that being said, I move the Village Board award the bid for the Country Creek Lift Station Upgrade Project to James McHugh Construction Company of Chicago in the amount of $334,000.
And approve of this resolution?
Second.
You need to add the resolution?
Resolution?
You have to resolve.
Resolution 2015-94. A resolution approving of the Country Creek Lift Station Upgrade Project agreement between the Village of Bartlett and James McHugh Construction Company.
It's not 94, is it? I think it's 96.
No, it's 94.
Oh, yeah, resolution 94. You're right. Moved by Trustee Cammer, and seconded by Trustee Daaney. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Ranky?
Yes.
Erins?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daaney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, Chairman Cammer.
Yes, thank you.
Next item we have on our agenda this evening is new business. Does anybody have any new business to bring up?
Just have one comment. I was at the, the open house they had for Metro, you know, it's redesigned downtown area, you know, and whatnot, and one of the business owners, well, actually, there were a couple of them that came up, and they had talked about maybe locating some type of a, a sign at 59 of West Bartlett Road. I know I've heard about this before, and I don't have a clue what happened before, but I know that, I wanted to ask staff what their opinion was of, if there's something that we can do to.
It's I dot's intersection, and we've talked to them.
I'm sorry?
It's I dot's intersection, and we have talked to I dot repeatedly, I don't know how many different times over the years, and they're not going to let us put up a sign.
All right, that's okay.
We even, we even wanted to put it on some of the sound walls.
They haven't changed their mind yet.
Okay.
Maybe when the intersection gets improved, that we could rethink that.
Can we get some kids out there on weekends with these sandwich boards and advertise downtown? All right, at least I have an answer now.
It is the Boy Scouts are doing.
Speaking of signage, I wouldn't mind taking a look, because you guys have so much time on your hands after chasing down all these bills and everything else. I would love to see a redesigned sign on 59 for Bartlett Hills. Just, I mean, you see the gargantuan one on 20 for the Park District, and it, then I see our, the villages, and I'm like, oh, my gosh.
Tasteful, you mean.
What's that?
I said tasteful, you mean.
Our tasteful one, yeah, and their, and their, their gaudy one. Let's use proper words. No, but I would like, I wouldn't mind seeing some proposals for, I think it's just with expanded banquet hall, I think, I think it's just more important that we get more bang for our buck out of that sign that you can barely read.
We'd be happy to.
Thank you.
I'd also like to add to that. That's a very good idea, but our, our golf pro is in the, in the audience now, and I've heard a lot of people say that the location of sign, you know, it's, it's in a poor area.
It leads people into that neighborhood.
Yeah.
Sorry if you couldn't hear me, but that does happen all the time. People are driving down 59, trying to find us. They end up in that neighborhood. We get the phone call, how do I get there? I'm in some neighborhood where I saw a sign, so I think it could be a location issue with that sign, too.
And, and our, excuse me, our location issues have to do with the right-of-way and where we're able to get that additional property to put up the sign. If I recall correctly, we did not have the ability, if anybody's remembering, to move it any closer to the road.
Yeah, and I wasn't talking closer, I'm just meaning to be a little bit more visible.
Sure, a different design.
And that might help our problem that Phil has as well, with just entrance off of, or toe, you know, entrance off of.
Or make a left, you know, a quarter, eighth of a mile, you know, to the south, something to that effect.
Could we heighten it? A little more visible?
Or, you know, for golfers, it might make more sense just to let them turn in there and then get rid of the right side of number eight, so people don't hit in the woods all the time.
Yeah.
You just drive down, drive your car down there and around down the tracks and get in that way.
That should actually be marked with red stakes and white stakes.
Yeah, let us take a look at that, too.